Good evening. I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting of December 6, 2021, to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter, Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? We're going to go to item 3, which is Announcements and Committee Reports. And item 3A is the COVID-19 update. As of this week, the state of Washington reports 686,549 confirmed cases of COVID in the entirety since March of 2020, and 9,413 fatalities due to COVID-19. Statewide and countywide, we are at 72.4% of those ages 12 and up that are fully vaccinated. In Skagit County, we have had a total of 12,954 cases of COVID. We've had 138 fatalities, and 763 people have been hospitalized. Skagit County also reports a case rate of 495.2 per 100,000 over the last 14 days, and our hospitalization rate is 16.1 per 100,000 over the last seven days. 204,802 vaccine doses have been administered in Skagit County to date, and the new booster shots will be available by appointment at the Health Office downtown Mount Vernon beginning December 13. Of course, they're also available at our local hospital and doctor's offices and retail facilities and pharmacies. The Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine is now available for children 5 to 11 at the Skagit Valley Fairgrounds by appointment, and booster doses are no longer available at the fairgrounds. Free antigen testing at the fairgrounds are limited to those who are currently symptomatic or have had recent exposures. And finally, the Skagit County Fairgrounds Testing and Vaccine Site will close permanently after January 28, 2022, and everyone is urged to use all of our local sources for tests and vaccines after that time. Are there any additions or discussion on COVID tonight? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on then to item 3B, which is our Fiber Committee Report.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. McDougal.
Actually, prior to the fiber report, I'd like to move to excuse Mr. Carter.
Oh, yes.
Second.
We have a motion to excuse Mr. Carter in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Fiber Committee.
All right, Mayor Geer. Fiber Committee met the week before last, and key items that we discussed, one of them being essentially that the Fiber Department has been working very hard on grant applications for Washington State Broadband Office funding. And one of the stipulations of that funding is if an incumbent can show that they provide broadband service in the area that we're requesting to kind of build, that incumbent can basically kind of, I guess, lodge an objection to our application, and the rules of the broadband office basically don't allow us to proceed. So unfortunately, we're no longer able to pursue those grant funds from the Washington State Broadband Office. So the recourse they suggest is that we contact our state legislators and ask them to change that set of rules that would allow us to be eligible for that funding. So that's where that stands. That does not affect the 2.25 million federal economic development grant funding that we got for the east side of town. So that's still in play, but we're still going through the process of getting that. So that's why that construction on the east side has actually been pushed back to later in 2022 because we did succeed, or the department did succeed in getting that federal grant. So that's that news. Expansion continues on the west end, and we've got, as of a couple weeks ago, 704 orders placed in the west end, which is nearly 31% take rate, and about 112 partial installations. So this is where the team has gone through and gotten things partially connected. So all they have to do is when the construction crew goes by down the street and finishes that up and cleans it up, then they can just do a splice. And so we should see a whole bunch of new connections come online quite soon. And finally, from a numbers standpoint, we're at a total of, and granted, this is close to two weeks ago at this point, so 894 total accounts in service, 767 of those are residential, 125 commercial. So that's a monthly revenue of nearly $60,000 a month. We should see, like I said, another 100 coming online fairly quickly at this point as well. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additions to Bruce's update? All right, we'll move on then to item 3C, our Housing Affordability and Community Services Report. Or was that group canceled? Was that? Did we have a meeting?
Mayor Geer, that was canceled.
That was canceled. All right, we'll have that next time. And then we have our Public Works Committee update.
Mayor Geer.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Our Public Works Committee meeting was held just prior to this meeting, and it was attended by Mr. Young, myself, Mr. Buckenmire, the Public Works Director, and Ms. Tesh. And we learned about the Public Works Director position that has been advertised. There were about 12 applicants, and there are six that are moving forward to a round of interviews. So more will be forthcoming on that. We talked a little bit about City Hall upgrades, its seismic deficiencies, and the cost of a retrofit, and $300,000 in the capital facilities plan for an elevator. So we talked a little bit about the advantages and disadvantages of moving forward with the retrofit, how much that would cost. But apparently, there was a study done about 15 years ago that indicated that to do a complete retrofit of City Hall was $7 million at that time, so we can only imagine how much it would cost now. So anyways, a topic of discussion that has come up and will come up again. There have been great conversations between port leadership and city leadership, between the mayor and Mr. Wora of the port, and our city attorney and their attorney about four agreements that are moving forward between the port and the city. There's an inter-local, there's a pond GFC question that's being settled, and then a Second Street access for the port, as well as a DNR easement through a small part of their water, the water property for our outfall. And those are all moving forward, so everyone's feeling really good about that. The other thing we talked about is the old water treatment plant decommissioning, and there have been excellent results from the testing of a paste that was developed by NASA to remove PCBs from paint that's on metal fixtures. And the initial results of that are fantastic. It's not expensive, and it's doing a great job so far, so we're really excited about that. It can save us a ton of money as far as disposal of these materials once they become inert. The Crowley Sensing Leak Detection System hardware and software is on its way from England. And we talked a little bit about the outfall funding, and we will have more on that in tonight's discussion of the capital facilities plan from Mr. Buckenmire. And that was it. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Moulton. Is there any additions to the other questions? All right, it's this time then we'll move on to item 4, which is our public comment. And if you are in the audience or online and would like to comment, would you let me know now? All right, I don't see anyone that wants to speak this evening, so we'll move on to items 5, which is our Consent Agenda, items A through E.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Miller.
Move to approve Consent Agenda, items A through E.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Young. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on now to item 6 under Other Business. Item 6A, and this is open for public comment. This is the R Avenue Long-Term Improvement Project Update Presentation. Mr. Tim Homan and Steve Lang will be doing the presentation this evening. Welcome.
Mayor Geer, members of council, members of the public, I'm Tim Homan, Engineering Services Manager for the Public Works Department. And yeah, I'm here this evening to introduce Steve and his team as they present to you the R Avenue Long-Term Improvements Project. I think they're gonna give you a little bit of history on the project, a little bit of an update on where they stand, and they're gonna kick off the public input portion of this phase of this project. So I'm going to pass you off to our project manager, Steve Lang, and he's gonna talk to you a bit and introduce some of his team. Take it away, Steve.
Thank you, Tim. Welcome, Steve.
Hey, good afternoon, good evening. What I need to do now is find my screen here. So what I have tonight is just an update on the R Avenue Long-Term Improvement Project. One of the takeaways from the meeting back in January of this year was to provide, come back and get some public feedback, as well as watch the costs of the consultant as far as the subcontractors. I remember that was a Matt Miller request, so we're gonna include that in tonight. I got Matt Randall, he's the professional engineer, he's with HW Lochner, and he's got some of his team members here, and I'm gonna butcher the last name of Aaron, but it's Luoma. He's a landscape architect. We're gonna give a little brief overview of how we got here, talk a little bit, or just show you the long-term improvement project as far as the phases go, since it's been almost a year, the funding, where we're at, some of the project highlights, and I'm gonna have Matt talk about that. We're gonna talk about the stormwater and the water quality, and then Aaron will take on a little bit of the conversation with the landscaping, and then talk about some of the design-related issues that I know about, but then throw in some other design ideas to consider, just to kind of maybe trigger some thought process. So this really started back in 2007, and I won't go through all the history because I hit most of it last time around. But more importantly, we selected HW Lochner as the engineering firm, and then on January 4th, you guys, the city council, awarded the contract to them. So now here we are, December 6, providing a project update, beginning of the public comment period. We have 30% plans done, we posted them to the project website. We also have a project board that you'll see tonight. I have printed those off, I just haven't figured out where to place them, so then that way the general public can come see them. Kind of guess in the library, maybe they get more traffic than City Hall does, but open to some ideas. So here's the phased project. It goes from 22nd R to 34th. We're doing Phase 3 and Phase 5 of this project. Just to kind of recap some of the design elements of the project, the roundabout is gonna be very similar to the one at R and 22nd, although it has a little bit different of a shape, but when it's all said and done, it'll look very similar. We're improving 30th Street from R to Q with curb gutter sidewalk, improving Q Avenue from 29th to 32nd with curb gutter sidewalk, and we're improving 29th Street from Q to Commercial with a pedestrian crossing, and some improvements on the west side of the road that will have rapid flashing beacons so people can hit the button and traffic will stop and they can cross. We're looking at a 10-foot-wide multi-use sidewalk from 22nd to 34th with a full median 22nd to 34th, and then we had presented back in January about the water quality features within the existing right-of-way. With regard to the project funding, we were awarded $525,488. Our match was $83,012, so we had a total of $608,500.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Young.
Steve, just to make sure I'm following you, I'm hearing the narrative, but the visual that I'm seeing in the display is still really just a listing of all of the projects you have right here. Should I be seeing anything other than that?
So we're gonna have on the project board a few slides down, you'll see what we're talking about.
No, no, I guess what I'm referencing is the thing that I'm seeing here is just your outline, but it's not showing me any pictures whatsoever.
Yeah, that'll be a few slides down.
Oh, okay, so you're describing...
Yeah, just giving a brief update as to how we got to where we're at.
Okay.
Steve, I'm not sure we're seeing your presentation. We're seeing your computer, not your PowerPoint.
They don't see this. Oh.
That's what I was trying to say, but I was willing to ride it out with you, Steve.
All right, well, so now it said share screen, so I'm assuming you could see everything. I'm sorry. I got Fred here helping me. Hold on.
Yep, try that. Until you see it right there, you'll be done.
Yeah, it's not letting me do it. Now I understand what you're talking about as far as pictures go. Says I'm sharing the screen.
Steve, you might need to stop screen sharing, open up your slide presentation, and then start screen share again.
Yeah, we just did that.
So it looks like Steve's having a little bit of technical problems. So what I propose, and I'm sure Steve will be back, but why don't I introduce Matt Randall, who's the consulting engineer on this? And Matt, I think you probably have a little bit to share with us, is that correct? We're probably gonna throw you way off your game. But I'm gonna introduce Matt Randall from Lochner, and then I think Aaron's here with him, and they can give their little bit of presentation, and I'm sure Steve will be back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I do have a copy of my version of Steve's presentation that I could potentially share if you guys would be willing for me to do that.
Yeah, well, maybe to orient us, that would be helpful.
Okay, I can do that. Let's see if I have any better luck, let's put it that way.
Yeah, hey, thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. We'll just switch roles tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we can go back to like the second slide there, the one that showed the phases. Thanks, Fred.
Now, do you see the...
Not yet.
Not anything?
All right, did that pop up?
Yep.
Everybody can see it?
Yeah.
All right, very good.
Hand it back over to Steve.
All right, well, so there's the phases.
Okay.
Okay. So here's the project design elements that I went through. So this is the slide that I thought was being shared, but wasn't. So we have the available funds here that we started off with, with the grant when we applied for it. We have the contract funds, which includes the federal funds with the Lochner contract, and then it would give us the city, you know, the $47,719 impact fees that we would have to pay. Right now, the project status is at 44% completion as of November 12, and the remaining dollar amount on the contract with Lochner is the 273, 210, 73. So this slide here represents the breakdown of consultants and where we're at from a funding, where the budget, and then where we're at with the accrual-wise, and I could certainly pass that forward. You know, the one that I was more particularly interested in was the geotechnical engineer. And Matt, you could probably jump in and kind of talk a little bit about that real quick.
Yeah, so geoengineers is providing the geotechnical study and environmental reporting and support. To date, they have provided us with a complete geotechnical report, which I believe is posted on the city's project site, on the city's website. They'll have a little bit more as we talk a little bit about some potential minor design changes that they need to address, that we've had just come up recently, but that shouldn't be much. So it looks like they're actually under budget as far as their geotechnical analysis goes, which is always a good thing, like to give money back. And then their environmental side, some of that has to wait until we get much further along in the project to go out to the SEPA documentation, so.
Yeah, so this here's just a representation to show how we're keeping track of each subcontractor and what's being spent on them. And then this here's the Project Overview Board that I'm gonna let Matt talk about.
Okay, so what you're looking at north is to the right. This was actually put together by Aaron Luoma, so HBB Landscape Architecture, that one of their things is preparing boards here. So it talks a little bit, this will be what Steve is trying to get printed out, it's also again available on the project's website, you can look at as a brief project introduction, talks through the history, but it shows the limits of the project focused mainly on R there from 34th all the way to just north of 23rd. We don't quite squeeze the 22nd roundabout in there on the north end. But you'll see where the main portion of the project is to close off the medians, so their right turn only from all of the side streets. And then with...
Mr. McDougal.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Randall. Would you mind putting the presentation in full screen mode, please?
Yeah, we're gonna go, let's see here.
From current slide, we'll work that.
There you go. Perfect.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you. So you see a roundabout there that we've designed at 30th, and we've gone through a couple of iterations. The roundabout was designed to consider the larger truck and trailer traffic that hauls some of the bigger boats and things that go up our avenue. So this is a kind of a blow-up of this. Again, this is Aaron Luoma's group that put this together, so thanks to them. And the roundabout there, the design there is similar to 22nd, has a little bit more of an oblong shape, mostly because we're dealing with slightly smaller vehicles going in the east-west direction, which is up and down in this picture, than we would be dealing with a 22nd. So you'll have a little bit different look from an aerial, but by and large, the same idea with single lanes going through it. Lots of safety for the pedestrians, we went with 10-foot sidewalks coming into all of this. One of the little catchpoints that we ran into on this project was just having to avoid the neighboring properties. We didn't want to encroach on those properties. And so you'll see a little bit narrowing of the sidewalks at the corners there, but that's just to make sure that we don't have to, the city doesn't have to go out and purchase any right-of-way from the neighbors. There's still, I believe, six-foot sidewalks in those pinch points, but new lighting there at the intersection, and then we'll also be addressing the stormwater here. So if we transition into kind of the stormwater discussion with that, you'll see, one of the things that the city has been doing, the Puget Sound Keepers has kind of pushed forward the idea of natural drainage practices for the city, and I want to commend the city for that, for taking on those ideas. I think there's a lot of opportunity with that to get kind of a dual purpose out of things. So this project is one of the ideas that we took on was to figure out how we can have dual purposes, and so managing our stormwater in this way. Essentially, Steve, if you could actually flip back one screen, the picture, yep, right there, that's kind of a planted, it's called a bio-cell or a bioswale or a bioretention, there's lots of different names. Immediately to the left of that, you'll see a cross-section of it, and that's essentially, it's a depression that collects the stormwater, treats it through a soil medium, and then we'll have a perforated pipe underneath it that will collect it and then convey it to the existing storm system, and some of the improved storm system. But essentially, what we're doing here is we're treating the runoff. There's been a lot of studies recently about just how it's affecting our fish, how it's affecting the orcas, and so this is an opportunity for us all to do a better job in managing our stormwater and making sure that we're putting clean water out for the bay. The other thing that we're doing is we're also using a pervious pavement option. So on the side streets, which wasn't in that last picture, there are some parking areas, and there'll be pervious pavement underneath it, and you'll see this along Q and a little bit on 30th, there are little parking areas that bump out. This is to provide parking areas for the residents or future businesses that are there, but underneath it... We kind of get a dual purpose, or to provide parking and get treatments. So, again, providing a dual purpose in what we're doing, so, again, it's just, it's a way to create an aesthetic while also providing an engineered system. Basically, that's the stormwater kind of roadway aesthetic and overview. I'm gonna actually turn it over to Aaron LaWoma a little bit to talk more about the landscaping portion of this.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity. The landscape portions of this project are highlighted with the new roundabout with three new trees, really copying and continuing the aesthetic of the roundabout on 22nd for familiarity and ease of maintenance as one enters the city from R Avenue. We've also proposed several additional trees along the corridor, but we've been very careful in selecting those locations to avoid utilities and making sure that those trees are not blocking any views, but are enhancing the tree line buffer areas along R Avenue as they exist already. We've also found that additional trees like this really do enhance not only the pedestrian experience along the multi-use path, but add to the overall aesthetics and also help with traffic calming in addition to the roundabout while continuing traffic flows at a good pace. The bioretention planting, as Matt detailed, not only serves a functional aspect for the water quality, but it also enhances aesthetics, and we've also found that it does provide a sense of traffic calming instead of just bare lawn, because there's more interest, more texture, more color, while still keeping the maintenance low with the intent that this is planting areas that are more natural in appearance, much like you'd find a natural swale in the woods or in some other kind of natural system. We've also noted that the multi-use path, it's designed to meander. That really helps allow different abilities of that path to go at speeds that they would like to, but also slow some of the faster riders, so to speak, so that we avoid potential pedestrian or bicycle conflicts. But it also helps us meander around some of the existing tree roots so that we don't have to take out existing mature trees that are along R Avenue. So, that meandering serves a couple of functions as well. And that's kind of the high-level summary of the landscape.
Thank you.
All right. So, the areas that Matt was talking about earlier, kind of in the lower right corner here, the, this layout here only cuts into the City of Anacortes property, so, you know, we see a need to, you know, quitclaim some property to ourselves for public right-of-way or an easement of sorts. Integrating the existing driveway, these are some of the design components. There again, you can see north is to the left. This is the existing driveway to the Salvation Army parking lot here, and how do we do that? This is just one of the ideas that we're looking at. You know, certainly can have other options. And then, we also have some encroachments in the public right-of-way that are gonna be in the way of our, of our improvements as we move over to Q Avenue. So, let's see here, then we, there's a proposal to take the multimodal trail, and currently the sidewalk itself goes right in front of the skateboard park and connects up at 22nd with the Tommy Thompson. And so then there's a proposal or an idea to come across the park property, so that's open for discussion as well. Some of the other design ideas-
Ms. Moulton.
Sorry, I don't know if this is an okay time to pop in about that particular thing, but, thank you. That intersection at 22nd at the roundabout, that can be a super sketchy place for walkers and bicyclists to cross over on the east side, so something like this seems like it could be really helpful, because I know people have gone off the curb when they're looking over their shoulder to see if there's a car going north on R. So, I like, I like something like this as an idea that would help keep people safer and more comfortable away from that intersection. Thanks.
Good, thank you. So, some of the other design ideas that I just threw out that we were gonna put on the website just for conversation was, 34th Street is identified as a bike pedestrian corridor, and the current thought to have them cross is to go down to the existing crossing at 32nd, 33rd on R Avenue and cross over to the east or west side, and, you know, what's the current thought on that? Do we want to have a crossing somewhere along 34th that's closer in alignment to that? 32nd Street between Q and R, you know, it's not gonna be what it is today when we're done, so, you know, we're gonna have some bulb-outs at Q Avenue and R Avenue, and it's kind of designed to look different and feel different than it currently does, so what would we like this to look like? One of the ideas that kind of has been in conversation is connecting Q Avenue between 28th and 29th, just for better traffic flow, maybe some storm. Landscaping along the R Avenue corridor, you know, what type do we want? Maintenance, that's a question, or do we leave it grass? The sanitary sewer conveyance lines running across the street, they were put in in 1955, so we'll be looking at that. The water treatment plant got ahold of me and said that they have notes that all the manholes leak going down R Avenue, and those were installed in 1972, so, you know, how do we go about fixing that? The storm basins, the catch basins on the west side of R Avenue are pretty shallow, and for an example, when Les Schwab built their truck facility, there was only one foot of fall in two blocks to get that water to drain off Les Schwab and make it to R Avenue. So, one of the ideas is being able to lower those catch basins on that side of the street so we could drain the sub-basins a lot better. Another one was the asphalt along the southbound lane. It's got a high point in it, and taking that down and putting it back to the way that it was designed for the R Avenue corridor. Paving both lanes, maintenance concerns about the bio-cells, swales, et cetera. Those are just ecology requirements, but I know the Parks Department, they maintain a lot of this stuff, so, you know, we have to start looking at the maintenance needs and, you know, they would just as soon have it grass so they could mow it. So, those are just some of the design ideas to consider, and we'll put those up and try to generate some good comments.
Mayor.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Mr. Lang, I think this would be a really good conversation to have at the Public Works Committee level, if you could come to our meetings and maybe we could look at some maps and hear your thoughts on these things and bring some ideas then from there to council to consider.
Certainly, and I most definitely would have had, you know, this is stuff that I thought about this weekend and, you know, different ideas, and it would have just taken me too long to try to come up with some quick maps for, for the drainage and stuff like that to actually make it make sense, if you will, so, yeah, I'd be more than happy to do that for you.
Mayor.
Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to echo what Ms. Moulton was saying. I think this is really a lot of work, and, you know, as you pointed out, just some good stuff that we're starting to do, and considerations that need to be well thought out and considered to put forward. So, I just really wanted to echo Mrs. Moulton and extend that invitation to come on to the Public Works Committee. Thank you.
Yeah. So, just in, go ahead.
Mr. Miller.
I just want to make sure that a 30% design gives us the fidelity to know that the roundabout size will be sufficient for vehicles, because I appreciate the focus on that part where we don't have to look at land acquisition. So, are you able to tell us with this design, with this design, we don't have to look at that any further, that that's good to go?
So, Mr. Miller, this is, this is actually the third design of the roundabout to make sure that it would fit within the parameters of what we laid out for them at the get-go.
Okay.
So, I'm pretty confident that it meets the needs.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay.
So, in closing, I just wanted to point out that we do have a project website set up on the City of Anacortes site. Been placing all the documents that support the project on the, on the site as well so people can take a look at it. Lochner has purchased WikiMapping, which allows us to provide a link to our website that people can get in and provide comments. I was anticipating consolidating the comments on January 2nd and getting them all addressed, so then that way we could move plans towards 100%, just so we can start looking for funding sources for the project. And just to get that out there, we do have social media platforms that we could send out weekly notices just to let people know, check the project site and provide input. So, other than that, that's, that's the update that we have for you.
Mayor. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. Mr. Lang, I was just hoping that you could give a brief explanation to why the roundabout is located at 30th instead of 32nd, because I think a lot of the public would, would assume 32nd would be the spot for it, especially when you talk about pedestrian traffic around 34th and 33rd. I feel like that's gonna be one of those first questions you get, so if we could, you could explain that.
Yeah, so, there's only three legs at 32nd Street where we have four legs at 30th Street, so it was just, it just seemed logical to put it at that location.
Will you use common, common words for us?
Yeah, explain legs.
Explain that a little further.
Oh, yeah, sorry, lanes, so, a leg, sorry. So, when you come into a roundabout, typically you have four, four lanes coming from different directions, and we just call those legs. And so, the right-of-way east of 32nd was vacated, and so we don't have that as a, as a way to access into the industrial park, if you will.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. Walters.
I think in terms of public outreach here, it can't be overemphasized how important that is. We've been working on this project for quite some time. I don't think that there's a huge value in the, putting the boards up at the library. The project website is great, but I really think we ought to mail a notice, especially to the people that live in the neighborhood between Commercial Avenue and R Avenue, that area between those two arterials where that 32nd Street corridor is largely gonna get realigned over onto 30th, but also the businesses east of R Avenue, and maybe even the businesses that use that as a truck route, probably would all like to know that this project is being developed and have the opportunity to submit input. I don't, I don't think that social media will, will cut it. I don't think that we're really quite there yet. And then finally, on pervious pavement, I do worry about pervious pavement. I understand that it has to be regularly maintained, has to be vacuumed to ensure that it continues to be pervious, otherwise sediment gets in it and fills up all the little holes. Are we planning for that? Do we have anywhere else we're maintaining pervious pavement, or, I mean, I guess we've just done this parking lot. Do we have the truck? Are we using the vacuum now? What's our, what's the background on that?
Yeah, so, we have, the only one that I'm familiar with in town is the 25th Street off of Commercial that goes into the hospital, right by the dive shop. That's all, that's all pervious paving, and so far, so good. It hasn't really had any issues. It looks like they got the right amount of oils in the, in the paving that is not peeling up like you typically see in a freeze thaw in a, in a parking lot. I think the idea of using it on these sides, on the, for the parking, is that it does provide water quality that we're not having to provide via a mechanical device, if you will. It probably won't see as much usage as one would think, but it's available to provide that water quality at any rate. As far as the maintenance goes, we don't really have any, any testing areas outside of 25th Street off of Commercial, and I don't believe we've been in there to do any, any maintenance of that in the 15 years it has been there.
And do we already have the Geotech Report that will tell us that pervious pavement will work?
I'm gonna turn that one over to Matt.
Yeah, you have, you have a geotechnical report. One of the things that we're running into with this site is, it was all built on fill, so there's a lot of silty materials in this. So, your, the info, the bioretention and pervious pavement, typically we like to put it back into the ground, but since this area was filled in the, in the 60s and 70s, well, before that even, the, some of the soils aren't good, so what we're actually going to do is we're gonna put a liner underneath it and collect it all, but we're still using it for, for the water quality requirement. Now, I understand that that could be, you know, one of those things where you go, well, maybe we don't want to do that, but, and that's why we're presenting it to you, so. One of the things, if I may, Mr. Walters, the pervious pavement has a, has a reputation for potentially plugging up, though I've never actually seen any plug-up, and I've done many, many acres of pervious pavement design. Typically, what they do is they design pervious pavement to handle about 900 inches of water an hour. Even in our last drains, we only got four to five inches in like a day. So, even if you, I mean, real quick, Matt, if you do the, you know, assume it 90% plugged up, that's still 100 inches an hour, or 90 inches an hour. So, in my experience, being able to, to maintain them regularly is good. If you miss a year, it's okay, and I have a feeling that this is gonna become more and more prevalent in all the cities around, as well as Anacortes, so, and I think we're gonna get better too in the maintenance as well, understanding it better, so, there is that. So, I hope that helps in kind of framing the conversation a little bit.
So, that's good to know, there's lots of extra capacity.
Yeah.
So, do I understand you correctly that you're gonna use it to filter the water, but then you're gonna collect that water again and continue to transport it out to the bay?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
The soils there, they're, they're too silty to actually provide any legitimate infiltrated capacity, so we just decided we're just not gonna, not gonna deal with that, and if there were any contaminations or anything like that, we don't want to, we don't want to mix that, so we're gonna put that liner underneath it just to make sure that we don't get it.
Any other questions, discussion this evening? Well, thank you, Mr. Lang, Matt, and-
Well, sorry, sorry for the technical issues there, but thank you for allowing us to present this.
Yeah, no, you're welcome, and thank you, all our visitors, and thank Mr. Hoffman. All right, at this time, we will move to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item 6B. This is Ordinance 3999. This is the 2022 to 2027 Facilities Plan, and Ordinance 4000 with 2022's budget. This is discussion with possible action this evening. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. I'm gonna go ahead and attempt to share my screen and go through some, some of the material that we prepared from tonight, and this is... Let's see. That get us there?
Yep.
Okay, back up to top of the slide deck, so, so the first slide, just, so this has got a few things related to the CFP and the annual budget, but this, just recaps the activity that we've had regarding the budget and the CFP so far, year-to-date, and since October 4th, pretty much every Monday, we've had something to do with the CFP or budget on the council agenda. So, the last-
Yep.
Okay, back up to top of the slide deck. So, so the first slide, just, so this has got a few things related to the CFP and the annual budget, but this just recaps the activity that we've had regarding the budget in the CFP so far, year to date. And since October 4th, pretty much every Monday, we've had something to do with the CFP or budget on the council agenda. So, the last time we met, there were seven items that we identified coming out of council as questions or concerns needing further clarification. So we tried to, tried to address each of those items here tonight. So, first one was about safe routes to school. That was included in the CFP and was unfunded, so indeed we verified that council was correct. Safe routes to school program was not funded in future years, so we did remove those out of both the CFP and the annual budget. So that program is, is no longer identified in either place. We also heard that there was additional detail requested for the facilities department. So we've got $600,000 budgeted in facilities projects in 2022, and those are made up of these, these items right here. So a couple of roofing projects at the Washington Park shop and the building at the cemetery. In the library, there's a couple of, couple of areas replacing some carpeting, updating the teen area, some additional security fencing at the police department, putting in some keyless entry stations at Fire Station 2 and Fire Station 3. And then at City Hall, updating the washrooms and city council chambers to meet ADA requirements, and also to upgrade the elevator. And as I believe it was Mr. Walters pointed out at one point, one of our meetings, that elevator upgrade is half of that $600,000. So a pretty significant project that they've got in mind for that. Third item, we heard a request for more information about the Gwimus Channel Trail Capital Plan. So in the transportation section of the CFP, and we include that the trail projects are required to be included in the transportation section, even though we generally think of the, the trail as a park facility. But in 2027, there is 3.5 million budgeted with grant funding for the, for the Gwimus Channel Trail. And then in that section that we have that identifies beyond the CFP planning arena, the GCT also has an additional $750,000 for Phase 3 Washington Park to the ferry terminal. The, there was some additional questions about sewer outfall project. So, the sewer outfall project is included in the CFP in 2022 at a cost of $19.5 million. The resources to fund that are $10 million in grant funding, and that's a FEMA grant, and $9.5 million from fund balance. So that fund balance is cash reserves, and those are, those are bond proceeds that have rolled over from the October 2020 bond issue. So we've spent some of those bond proceeds. There was about 10.1 that were issued in, for the sewer utility. We've spent about 3 million of those, the balance of those bond proceeds, story size in the utility fund, in addition to about 3 million, 3.5 million maybe, in additional capital funding that has been set aside in the capital fund, or in the utility, sewer utility fund. There's also a question about a sewer line from Leverick's, and the sewer utility in 2027 has $9 million budgeted, and that's for a line to run from Leverick's to 6th Street, and that's, the resources for that program is user fees. Another question we had was on the grant funding, just a little more clarification on the grant funds that were included as resources for the CFP. So, we put together this simple, this simple matrix. It shows the department and the year, and then which department is receiving how much grant funding in those years. So, in the bottom left corner of this slide, I put the details for the first year, for 2022, which projects those grant funds were identified for. And in the fiber department, it's for the continued fiber backbone buildout. Park says 655,000 budgeted to support the Washington Park restroom project, the Tommy Thompson Causeway removal project, and the Capstown lookout. In the transportation department, this 982,000 is for R Avenue and South Commercial Avenue, Phase 1. I did want to point out in, in transportation, in these out years, 2024, 25, and 26, there's $20 million each of those years identified for the Commercial Avenue Phase 2 project. And of course, in the sewer fund in 2022, that 10 million in FEMA grant funding.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. McDougall.
A quick, quick question, Mr. Hoagland. On the R Avenue, Phase 1, is that the, I guess, the 3.5 million in 2024 that's above the 20 million, and then the 5 million in 2023?
So, so part of this, part of this 985 in 2022 is for R Avenue, and I apologize, I don't remember the breakout between those two projects now. But I don't remember the details of, of that in the, in the out years. I'd be happy to chase that down and get that out to council after this meeting, if that's okay.
Sure, yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
The last question we had was just a little more clarification on the overall revenue picture for the CFP. And I can understand where some of the confusion comes from in the, particularly in the utilities. So, all of the resources we have listed, or virtually all of the resources listed for the utilities are user fees, and that is unique to the utilities. They are self-supporting through user fees, and with the exception of the FEMA grant in 2022, all resources listed are user fees for all, for the utilities. So, we frequently use bonds to help fund programs in the future, and we still list user fees as the resources for those projects. And ultimately, user fees is what is used to make the debt service payment. But additionally, when we incorporate these programs or these projects into the CFP, we can then identify those to be added into our user fee structure, and then collect cash to set aside for future projects. So it's not always knowing how much debt we will require in the future. In fact, in the, in the water utility, we generally don't, for, when you look at the number of projects that we do in the water utility and the amount of debt that we have issued, it's a pretty small ratio. Most of those projects, we do use cash that we've set aside and then saved up for that, for that future project. So the next several slides is just kind of a recap of the revenue summary, revenues by type, revenues by department. Before we get too far away from these questions, I wanted to verify that we've answered those council questions before we move on.
Mr. McDougall.
I actually had a quick one back on the Gwimus Channel Trail, the, the 3.5 million. The CFP document itself says that's for Phases 2, 3, and 4, which is basically the, kind of the east side and west side of the Marine Terminal or Ferry Terminal Road, and then again, some, a section that's more east towards 6th Avenue. Does that funding, do we know if that funding includes the potential to have to acquire some private property to, in order to safely get around the, the wetlands and allow for adequate buffer? Or is that not included in that, in that dollar figure? And it's okay if we don't know the answer to that right now?
I know I don't know the answer to that. If Mr. Buckenmark or Mr. Lunsford, they can jump in here if they have the answer to that. Otherwise, we'd be happy to follow up with that.
I also, on that, while we're waiting for them, is that 3.5 million in 2027 was identified in the Washington State Department of Transportation's budget. So that's state funding coming.
Oh, great.
Yeah. So just so you know that that's how we came up with that. When they put that in the budget, probably five or six years ago, and I went, oh my goodness, 2027, but now it's, it's getting closer, so. So, Mr. Lunsford or Mr. Buckenmark? Yes, go ahead.
This is John Lunsford. So we, Mr. McDougall, so I think that is just for construction, but we can look at that legislative funding, get back to you next week with the answer that you want.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so these next several slides, this is included in your packet, and it's included in the total packet that's been posted to the city finance webpage. This shows the summary of revenues by type over the funding period 2022 through 2027. I did want to point out this bump here in 2024. It's, this dark blue is debt. And I did want to clarify that that, that spike in debt, it's a $20 million item that we have in the CFP for the community center. And that debt is not expected to be assumed by the city. So this project is a public-private partnership, and the, the details of that partnership are still evolving. And we do have, we do have players involved that are dedicated to the project. This is currently how it's shaping up, but it's not the, not the, it's not the final version at this point. CFP by department, so this light blue, this is transportation, and a lot of this is driven by that three years of $20 million in grants each of those three years. By revenue type, again, and then by, by revenue type, by department. So I think this is the last slide of the CFP. A couple of things I wanted to touch based on the annual budget, unless there's any other questions or comments about the CFP before we move on.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Why would we characterize external funding from donors as debt?
So, Mayor Gere and I talked about this earlier, I guess last, last week now, and it's not, so it's the, the project and the, the funding sources and the makeup of the project is still fluid. What my understanding is, we have commitments of $25 million, but we've only had an endorsement of 5 million that we can actually put down as essentially cash in the bank. I understand there are commitments for the other 20 million that, that are still being, the details of which are still being worked out.
Okay, well, I guess that gets to a larger question about what the effect of the CFP is or ought to be, because I, I don't endorse any projects where we don't have those $25 million lined up from external donor. So, do we consider projects that are in the CFP endorsements by the city council to go forth and pursue and build the project until you run up against the mayor's contract authority and have to come to us for a signature? Or is it just a high-level planning document that we, we don't really follow? I mean, there is a statute that says that capital budget decisions have to be made in conformity with the CRV, CFP. Not that anybody really pays a lot of close attention to that, but what, what are, what are we doing with the CFP?
So I know that a lot of the projects we have in here, like for example, that Commercial Avenue, Phase 2, 60 million over three years, we don't have any of that money in the bank. I don't know that we ever will, but we can't apply for those grants without this being, without that project being listed in the CFP. So we have, you know, some of those types of elements in the CFP. As far as the community center goes, I had the understanding that, that there was a lot of community support with some specific donors behind that, and that it wasn't so much, that wasn't really a wish list item, but it still is in kind of the fluid state of development.
Yeah, I, I think that it's, it's potentially a great idea, although I think it's been very opaque to the public because it hasn't really been pitched in a public setting yet. But contrast that with, say, the sewer extension to Leverick's, $9 million is a large chunk of change, and do we really want to pursue that if we don't, if we don't have a very clear idea of what that's, what, what benefit that provides the city generally? Because that one's one of the projects that's expected to be paid for from user fees. I mean, my, my concern is that if we get a project added to the CFP, all of a sudden staff think, well, it does in fact have the city council's endorsement. And that concern dovetails nicely with the fact that the CFP is not proposed to be attached to the ordinance. I don't think that we should ever adopt the ordinance without the document that we're adopting attached to it. There's really no reason not to attach. We're not worried about killing trees, it's all electronic. But I don't think it's appropriate for it to be adopted by reference. It's part of the comprehensive plan. We wouldn't adopt that by reference. It ought to be attached and ought to show up in Laserfish in our public document portal with the document right there with the one-page ordinance text.
Okay.
Additional comments? Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Walters on that. I think it would be helpful to have that attached and have a real, have that there together.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
I think on the, Mr. Walters makes an excellent point on the community center piece. I think having that in the CFP, I would be comfortable if there was a possibility of a government grant in there. I asked with a question, is there a possibility of government grants? Because that would be some logic of having the CF, have it in the CFP.
At this time, there's nothing that I can point to on that. And I think my understanding, when we put this in, it was more of a planning. If you don't have it in the CFP, if you're not planning for it and identifying potential funding options, you can't build it. So, that was, when we had this discussion, that was my intention, if you're planning, just like, you know, South, the commercial Phase 1, they're 12th and Commercial, if, you know, we're planning for it, whether we, we have all the funding to fund it. If we don't get the funding, we can't build it. But if we don't have it in the CFP, can we build it? So, I think, maybe, Steve, you can clarify that. But I've, I've always looked at this as a, if you don't, if you're not planning for it and identifying where it may come from, you can't build it in the future. And it won't be built if you don't get the funding, so. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, kind of going off that, I appreciate the idea of wanting to really only have projects that we know we're going to fund and, and we're giving that stamp of approval. But to me, the CFP is really a strategic, it's a strategic planning document, almost, where here's, here's kind of what's on the table. So if the public wants to see what are major projects that we're, we have kind of floating around, they can go to the CFP and, and get a better understanding and then ask all of us, or ask whatever department it would fall under. I don't think we're ever going to get it quite, you know, black and white as we would like, but it's a working document, and it, it seems to identify our major projects. And I appreciate the additional information under each project that's been included since it started out earlier this year.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. McDougall.
I, I agree with Ms. Cleland McGrath. I've, I've kind of always pictured the CFP as a, a mix of projects that we must do and projects that we aspire to do. And perhaps there's just a simple categorization within the CFP document where this is a must-do and then this is an aspire-to-do project.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Mr. McDougall has it precisely right there. We ought to articulate in the document itself which projects are required to support development and which ones aren't. And that distinction is driven by the statute. The statute requires the CFP to ensure that we're providing the infrastructure and services that are required to support development. And we, I don't think we've ever really gotten to the point where we've articulated in the document which, which projects are. document which, which projects are required on that basis and which ones are not. So for instance, the community center, I think we are all sort of generally on board, although we haven't articulated it, that the community center is something that we would like to have, but if we can't fund it, that's okay, we just won't build it. But then there are other projects, you know, like maybe that $9 million sewer extension. Is that a requirement? Because it, it's not a community center. It, it's not obvious to the reader that it's not a requirement. So if we don't include that detail and then approve a document that has that detail in it, I don't think that we are providing the appropriate level of guidance to staff as to what it is we want to see as elected officials.
Mayor Gere. Ms. Moulton.
I, I agree with that idea. I think it would be really helpful to us and to our citizens to look and say, this is what we have to do, this is what we would like to do. It could be a simple little box on the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
No, I just thought I'd chime in since everyone else has and just say I agree. I think like Ms. Moulton was saying, just maybe a little bit of additional information so we can discern between what we want to do and what we aspire to do. I just think that additional information like that would be of great benefit, not only to us as council in making the decision, but also to the public as well when they come back and review it.
Okay. So is that something, Steve, that we can accomplish in the next week or for this round or is that a future?
Yeah, Mayor, that's a good question. That's what I was, that's what I was going to say. I, I think these are all excellent comments and I, we've, some of our council members will remember, a number of years ago, the CFP looked quite different than it does now. I think it's a, a really improved document that we have now. I think it's actually a useful tool and I want to continue to improve on it every year. And that's something that I would, these comments about the, the type of project that we're presenting, that's something that I would like to incorporate into future CFPs rather than try and make those edits this week if, if at all possible.
All right. Any other comments on the CFP?
So I guess I would, if I could, Mayor, if I could get clarification on that, I don't want to, you know, come back next week and then, you know, have it rejected because I wasn't understanding the council expectations.
All right, council.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Well, I've been trying to make this distinction between capacity projects and projects that aren't capacity for quite a number of years, so I would like to get that done this year. In addition, I won't vote for a CFP that doesn't have the document attached.
Okay. Further comments? Mayor Gere. Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I don't know off the top of my head how many of these are aspirational versus must-have, but it seems to me that not that many are aspirational, but some significant ones are. So instead of doing every single page, maybe, you know, marking every single page that the aspirational ones could be fairly quickly identified and marked in that way between now and next week.
Okay. I'll help you, Mr. Hoagland.
Okay.
All right, fair enough.
So my next, next slide has a discussion point about the ladder truck. So ladder truck for the fire department is included both in the CFP and the annual budget. It's in the CFP because we're going to use impact fees to help pay the debt service on it. The, we discussed this a little bit last week and there's a 10% discount if we can pay the full amount of the purchase price at the time it's ordered. So there's two 10% discounts at play, or in play. One of them is just to get it ordered before 2022, as there's a price increase anticipated after the first of the year. But then that, that full payment at the time of purchase. And initially, I was all for it. I mean, I like to save money as much as the next person. But I had, since had a discussion about that with the operations manager, Will Ludeman, and he's been our fleet manager for, prior to that, for many, many years. And he's got concerns about, about paying for that outright before, or right at the beginning of, of the order. So his concern is, you know, we have, if we're paying for that entire project to begin with, we don't really have any leverage with progress payments through the course of the build process like we normally would. And the, the second item I had here about prepayment allowable under state law, that, that I have been able to answer. I worked with MRSC to get an answer to that and it is allowable if that is written into the contract. So it's really just now a matter of if we want to take, if, if there is a risk with not having progress payments to leverage the manufacturer, if we want to take that risk.
Can you articulate what you mean by loss of leverage? What possible things could go wrong?
Just, they may not have, the manufacturer may not have the motivation to, motivation to work with us through that build process, to try and meet deadlines, to try and deliver quality product. If we have concerns about any of those items and we've already paid for it, we're kind of, we, we don't have that as leverage over the, over the contractor.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
Yeah, I totally understand the point that you're making there. What would be contextually helpful is if we talk in terms of dollars, meaning if we order before 123121 to avoid a 10% increase, what we're talking about is X amount of dollars. And paying in full at time of order for an additional 10%, if we can state that sort of in approximate numbers, when you're describing what we may gain or lose in leverage, it puts that in a contextual balance for all of us to make the determination what's in our best interest.
Sure. So the, what we have written into the budget now is 1.5 million for the ladder truck. I think that might be kind of the, the top of the market. It was an estimate. We didn't have a, you know, a detailed quote from the manufacturer. So it was an estimate, I believe it was a high estimate, but, but it gives you the neighborhood we're talking about, so.
About $150,000?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I got it. No, that's very helpful because then it sort of, you know, leans towards saving that $150,000 about, you know, yeah, I, I totally get it. Thank you.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
So the, the decision I think we're looking for is, is it worth $100,000 to maintain that leverage? And I'm trying to figure an analogy that doesn't involve, do you pay a contractor the upfront amount for redoing your floor or something and then they disappear on you? Or, but this is a vehicle and I think there are some pretty important leverage points like, is Mount Vernon buying from the same company? I think it's Pierce or Pearson or something like that. You know, what is, what is the reputation and what is the delivery? So there's, there's other factors involved in just the, the, in a vacuum, $100,000 worth of risk, risk avoidance that we take by, you know, by not saving that $100,000. And the leverage is important, I just don't know how much it's worth.
Yeah.
And, and if I might add, you know, I think it would be a question too for Ms. Sweattnam is if in our contract, could that vulnerability be mitigated by language in our contract as well? So that's something to look at.
Okay.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I had asked that question, whether we have to use a, a form agreement provided by the company or if we can modify that and use our own language, because obviously we enter into contracts for larger amounts than this. The question of whether prepayment is allowed is one for the auditors or the attorneys, but, you know, if not, then that answers that. If it is, then we're back to just can we write in provisions in the contract to mitigate the, the potential for them being late? Which obviously we can, right? We'll do that on construction projects and that kind of thing. It's just if there's only one monopoly provider of fire trucks, then maybe we don't have any options. But, you know, we need, we need that background information on that, on that pay-in-full question. Still on the ordering before the end of the year, that seems like a straightforward one. And it's $150,000, so I, I certainly support moving forward.
Okay. Mayor Gere. Yes, Ms. Moulton.
It is a lot of money, $150,000 to $100,000 to $150,000. And I don't know if there is a way to reach out to Mount Vernon, are they doing it at the same time? Can we do it together with them? That might be a lot of work and not pay off, but that would be another question to ask at least if they're doing it or if we do have more information, like Mr. Miller said, about what kind of company they are to deal with and how reputable they are, et cetera.
I agree, we can get those questions answered.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
No, just wanted to follow up to make sure we're, we're still on the same page. I know we're talking about the pay-in-full discount, but it seems that, at least I am agreeable to ordering before the end of the month, you know, to avoid a 10% increase. And I thought I heard Mr. Walters say he was, it seems like a no-brainer, I think was his quote, but I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page and then the discussion could evolve about the pay in full or not.
So Steve, just to clarify, are those two different? One is to avoid the increase and one is to get a discount? So in reality, it could be 20% difference?
Yes, that's correct. Two different it is.
So I think we're all in agreement to get it ordered, but it's how we, how we order it is what we need to figure out this week.
Yeah, that's the question. Do you want us to move forward with figuring out a plan to purchase the entire, pay for the entire purchase at the time of order or stick with the traditional progress payments?
I think we need to get the council a little more information and make a recommendation.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, go ahead. Jack Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. I did speak with Will a little bit more on this and I also spoke with the representative for Pierce. First of all, I do want to start off and say we have dealt with, with Pierce in the past and they are a very reputable company. Also, there would still be, even if we pay it in full, it would still be a bond that would be provided by the manufacturer, which gives us a lot of those protections. And I'd be more than happy to get some more details as to exactly what that bond would encompass and get that information back to council. We're going to be meeting with the rep on Wednesday.
Okay, that would be wonderful. Thanks for being here. All right, does that, does that help? Any other questions on that issue? We can get that wrapped up by next week? Okay, Steve, go on to the next item.
Okay, so the last question I have on the annual budget, there was some interest last week in putting an additional police officer into the 2022 draft budget. Haven't made that change. I think it would be prudent if, that's something that council wanted to, to pursue, to get into the 2022 budget. I think it'd be prudent to identify offsetting costs so that it could remain cost-neutral. Another option, wait until 2023. At that point, the fiber operations are projected to be, the operations are projected to be cost-neutral and that should free up some, potentially free up some cash flow. So I wanted to talk about this a little more, find out how important it was to council to get that into the draft budget for 2022 and if there were some offsetting considerations that we could discuss.
Well, Steve, you had a recommendation if the council wanted to move forward with this opposition. Can you share that?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
I believe you told me you had a suggestion on how we could put it in the budget, what we, you were going to recommend the option?
I, just in trying to identify offsetting costs was, was my only thought. I mean, there's a variety of things we could do. We could, you could put, we could reinstitute the hiring freeze and try and gain through attrition to be able to fund this position if we have some positions open up, other areas, in other areas that are funded by, by tax funds. Or implement just across-the-board cuts in supplies or professional services, things of that nature to free up enough money to support one of those officer positions.
Mayor Gere. Yes, Ms. Moulton, go ahead.
Thank you. I would be in favor of adding the additional police officer and have someone on the drug task force. I think that that is a need that we have. However, I think that we also have other staffing needs that have yet to be addressed to even get us back to where we were prior to COVID. And I think that that is an equal priority and actually I think comes before adding additional staff in any department. And I think it would be prudent for us to wait until 2023 and see maybe even what we could do as, as 2022 progresses and revisit some of this. But I think that I would be in favor of waiting.
Okay.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I think I would disagree with Ms. Moulton. The prior condition of how many staff members of various departments had, I think is not as relevant as our priority for which department should have which positions going forward. The police department wants to, or has and wants to continue dedicating a police officer to the Skagit County Interlocal Drug Task Force. And I think that that makes sense. The, the drug task force relies on having officers from various departments. And I worked with that briefly doing civil asset forfeiture and I got to tell you, they will treat your department differently if you are not really contributing to their effort. And some other cities in the past haven't contributed and we will be in a much better position if we do. And plus, that's the judgment of our police chief, that we ought to contribute an officer to the interlocal drug task force. So I think we ought to do that. And I think he's already, he's already done that, but that means we need to backfill a position in our department. And I don't want to shortchange our residents on service that they depend on and deserve in the event that they are the victim of a crime, because I, I think we're talking a detective position. So, and also beyond that, we probably need to add more officers to the police department because of simply the volume of calls that they are dealing with and their inability to take breaks during their shifts. If we can somehow do something else to get the volume of calls down, that'd be great and there might be some possibility of that. But the instant problem is, is this question of dedicate an officer to the, to the county drug task force and that's not a problem for 2023, it's a problem for 2022. So I think we ought to find the money to make that happen. There are a variety of options. One of them might be to draw from reserves, including those dedicated reserves for other departments, which I mentioned last time. That's a more of a, a larger change to the budget to make some of that happen, but I, I think we ought to receive a menu of serious suggestions from finance that we could choose from.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Concur. And I, I think, you know, fiber obviously is putting a lot of strain on the general fund and using the weight, and you're never supposed to budget construction and labor costs and the same thing, but that's essentially what we're doing in the general fund. We're using some general fund money to get fiber going. We have been, we continue to do it. So you could, you could reword line 2C with maybe hold $100,000 from the fiber construction during 2022 to fund an officer, for example. So I think, I think Mr. Walters' point of having our finance director take another look to see, because we don't even know midway through 2022 where we're going to be funding the rest of fiber from the general fund. So making such a hard and fast statement of waiting for fiber to be worked out in 2022 is, is not really a fair answer to the discussion of whether we, you know, another police officer can another police officer can work. So, you know, I think I think we can come up with I think I could come up with it if we looked at just some line items in other areas. But just in the fiber area, like, okay, you know, $100,000 less, you know, but it's not it's not that direct trade off. But.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
No, I just wanted to weigh in. I do think, though, Ms. Molton makes a good point, as well as, you know, Mr. Walters and Mr. Miller. But I think for me, I would like to see more about where it would come from, you know, sort of the process of the process of adding an additional officer, for which I'm very supportive of, have always been supportive of. But it's sort of, I'm just looking at how we get there and where does it come from? Because there are a lot of things that we really do need to consider. And officers are very important. I get that. But I want to know where we can get the money from. And then also still look at some of the other things that we have to deal with in getting the city started again.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Molton?
Thank you. I think that if we are in favor of looking at finding 100 to 150,000 dollars in our budget for an additional police officer, we should also look at finding that $90,000 for the Parks Department and that however much it costs to get our library back to full staffing. I think that all these departments are important, and Parks and the library are front lines when it comes to dealing with people who have substance and mental health disorders and are doing that every day themselves. And not to say that that's any replacement for someone on the drug task force. I agree that we need that. But I think that we should prioritize our departments equally and fill in those gaps that we've already taken away and we haven't filled yet. So I would also like us to look for the money for those positions at the same time.
Thanks, Ms. Molton.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
I I agree that we also need that the library and parks are also important. I don't think that I will I don't I don't think I can reasonably make the argument that they are equally important as police. I think we have many more needs beyond what the 2020 status quo was on staffing of those departments, though, too, which is why I didn't I voted for the 1% property tax increase because we can't afford to go backwards. But in terms of how do we find money for this, I think it's going to be difficult enough to find $125,000 for one police officer. I think it's going to be a lot more difficult to find that money for other positions in library and parks. However, library and parks do have their own reserves, and they could draw on those own reserves to fund those positions. I don't I don't think that's a long term good idea, because you shouldn't fund ongoing expenses with reserves without a plan to get through the rainy day and then back onto a more stable course. But if we're talking one year, then maybe that makes sense. I also agree with Mr. Hoagland's suggestion that we continue to institute the hiring freeze. I think if there's if there is a retirement or other attrition, that we ought to take a hard look at whether the position is really needed, whether we can reorganize. The department should be required to do that, whether it's an all all year hiring freeze, or at least a 90 day hiring freeze, so that there's there's time to see if you can get by without that staff member, or if there's a reorganization that makes sense, given who you've got in the department and what their skill sets are. Saves real money 90 days worth of salary is real money. And I think that would really benefit us, even if it's not permanent.
Hi.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Molton and then Ms. McGrath.
Thanks. I also would like to say that I'm not trying to put departments in a hierarchical order. There is police and public safety. There is library and parks and quality of life and mental health and education and access to information. And all of these things are important. And I think sometimes they tend to get short shrifts. And I think that this is an instance where that seems to be happening again. So I think those departments are equally equal are equal to the police, and I think that they should not just be pushed aside as if they are not.
Ms. McGrath?
Thank you. Ms. Molton, I agree with what you're saying about things, you know, the issues of the the reduction in staff for various departments. And and I agree that there shouldn't be any kind of comparison or hierarchy, because I do want to say that our various departments work very well together when we're talking about social issues, homelessness, and, you know, whatever those issues, like the Parks Department, the library, and the police department, and the fire department actually have a lot of overlap and are in communication more than I think the public realizes. So I think that, like, what's good for one is is good for all, as long as we continue to have that kind of collaboration in our in our city. And I'm really pleased that that occurs. And I want to make sure that continues. I think the difference for me when it comes to the request for an additional detective versus the versus those frozen positions for the or the lost positions for the parks and the library, is that our state legislature passed a number of new laws with good intent and and with the goal of improving how the police work with the public and public safety. The challenge is, is those new laws, there's a lot of gray area, and it is going to require ongoing assessment of how those laws are going to be interpreted. And having that additional detective, even the way if 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 there is an incident of a crime, how the police can respond to that is much more challenging to how they're going to navigate that situation. And so having an additional detective to try to deal with crime that's happening, domestic violence that's happening, all of those things in our community, to give them one additional position, is, I think, is really pertinent to this 2022 year versus waiting for a future year to add that position in. I do hope that there's some way that we can finesse the fiber budget, because while fiber is really important and will be a good benefit to our community, I think public safety is is a higher priority. And maybe there's a since we're having a higher take rate than projection than our initial projections, maybe that's a way that we can do it. But I would like to see some options to add that position in for the police department this year.
All right. All right.
Mayor?
Mr. Walters, go ahead.
I also worry that we will incur unanticipated expenses in the next year, maybe largely as a result of the change in the law, making drug offenses into misdemeanors rather than into felonies. Felonies go to Superior Court over at the county. Misdemeanors are here in municipal court. Will we need to add capacity? Will we need to add days of the week? I don't have a crystal ball for that, but I think that there's potential. We may have more cases. We may need more conflict counsel for public defense. We may need more time from a prosecutor. We may need another prosecutor. Those were big changes. And the police department is just maybe one side of that equation. So I think that we should get ready to be thinking in terms of having more expenses there. Need to put more resources into those things, at least prepare for it as as it might end up. But keep in mind, library and parks are two departments that are different than other departments. Police Department, Fire Department, they well, Police Department, anyway, doesn't have its own fund, and Parks and Library do. So that's potentially a source of money to help fund those positions, because I know we need staff for those types of service positions in other departments as well.
I might add to that, that I have had some great conversations with both Mr. Vogel and Mr. Lunsford about their budget for '22 and '23. And they're both been very thoughtful about what they have in reserve, what they can do now, what they want to do in the future. So and I think they're very collaborative in their approach to the citizens. So I agree with you, Carolyn. I quality of life, and I agree with you, Ms. McGrath, the interdependence of those departments and frontline is really important. But I think Mr. Vogel, Mr. Lunsford would be supportive of of the council doing this with the police department, knowing that, you know, they feel supported, and they know that they have resources that they could dip into, or and that we do value their departments in the future. They will be funded differently coming out of COVID. So that hasn't been neglected in our conversations. So what I'm hearing is that we need to come back to you next week with a way to fund a position for you to look at whether you want to consider it, when we can give you some real options of how that can be funded in the budget. Is that what I'm hearing? All right. So we'll return next week with a prioritized CFP with must have and would like to have, and we'll come back with how we would fund a police officer. What else, Steve, do we have as far as budget questions?
Oh, that's it, Mayor.
That was it?
Okay.
Really good conversation. Really appreciate this. And I know the community does, too. All right. So we will return next week with those two ordinances for your action, we hope, as we near the end of the year and when you get ready for 2022. So at this time, we'll move on to item 6C. This is Resolution 3051. This is updating the city council procedures. This is a discussion with possible action, and it's open for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may share my screen again. This again, a few slides. There we go. A few slides I wanted to go through. Am I my first time using PowerPoint? Okay, again, the chronology of COVID-19 events from March 16, when the emergency declaration was made, through through the current timeframe. So just as a reminder, we do have the the current resolution that is the response, the city's response to COVID expires December 31, 2021. So the last remaining element of Resolution 2082 and Resolution 2082 is the city's response to COVID-19. And that's Section 3A, and that is the section that suspends council procedures. Currently, the currently adopted council procedure is limits one council member to participation in absentia, and it also limits the number of remote meetings to eight per year. So the other elements, there was a long list of elements in Resolution 2082 that addresses the the COVID crisis, and those have been addressed through other means. As far as the hybrid meetings go, those have been, for the most part, very smooth and running pretty seamlessly. And I it strikes me that most council members do seem to like to attend council meetings in person. I've seen pretty, you know, consistent in person attendance across the dais. So the way the the way the council procedures are drafted for your consideration tonight, it provides unlimited remote attendance, which, in my thinking, would allow quick responses to address issues that might come up from new COVID variants. Just thinking kind of thinking this through what we've been seeing in the last several months, we've had two new variants since this last COVID extension was adopted. And it would also allow council members to meet their obligations regardless of their geographical situation. So the resolution tonight, Resolution 3051, has two sections that are edited. So Section 4.3, that's a section of participation in absentia. Part A is definitions remains unchanged. Part B eliminates the advance notice requirements of remote participation. Part C regarding the ability to hear the proceedings is eliminated because that's been taken care of. Limiting access to one member is eliminated, and limiting participation to eight times per year is eliminated. And then the part F section is eliminated that records who it was that participated remotely. So, yeah, there's also a small edit in the section about addressing council when citizens address council. It eliminates the requirement to speak into the microphone, because clearly now we're allowing those public comments to the remote attendance by citizens as well. And it eliminates the requirement to provide their address when a citizen is addressing council. So and I did work closely with the city attorney's office when making that edit. So again, Council Resolution 3051 would update council procedures. It would eliminate the limitation on remote attendance by city council members. So happy to try and answer any questions council might have, or?
And if there's anyone attending remotely that would like to comment also. Okay, council, what are your thoughts? It basically would allow what we're doing today for time immemorial until you change it again.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
My my only thing is completely eliminating the requirement to show up ever. There's a long tradition of legislature. I mean, it's just a historic precedent that if you're representing the public, you eventually should show up and be able to debate with your other representatives of the it's it to me, it is just a it's a very long way away from what representative government is supposed to be. The so just completely, you know, just completely eliminate the requirement for council to ever show up physically. It just doesn't doesn't feel right to me. And then the other piece, the the address thing, I don't understand where that's coming from, especially since, you know, is when we're remote, you know, we could have 1,000 people testify for and maybe you don't have a permanent address. That's fine. But, you know, I live in Anacortes. At least I think it's helpful to know if somebody's addressing the council that they're from Anacortes, or they're from, you know, Michigan, you know, Detroit. I think that's kind of helpful.
Maybe we can have Mr. Hoagland. Mr. Hoagland, why why do we want to get rid of the address for the?
That was something in just when I was speaking with Ms. Wetnam about this, there's no legal need to or no legal requirement to have that in the council procedures or in the procedures for citizens may comment. So that's why that was eliminated in this edit.
Okay. All right. So that was just historical practice. It wasn't based on a requirement by law or anything like that?
Right.
Okay. Okay. And then so that's that answers that. Then there's the bigger question that you addressed about representative government. So council, what are your thoughts?
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Molton?
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Miller. There I think it really is important to actually show up. And even an example like this evening, when we're having a discussion about something, like sitting next to Ms. Cleo McGrath as we discuss something, seeing Mr. Miller, Mr. all of us here, it really it's not intangible. It's real communication and discussion, not that virtual is not. But even though our current council is committed to showing up in person when they can, we don't know about the future council. And I think it's really important to have some requirement of in person participation. I don't know if eight's the right number or exactly how to approach this, but I agree with Mr. Miller. I think it's really important for us to show up and be here together.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
No, you know, I totally understand that. The caveat, though, is that we're in the middle of a pandemic. I'm sure all of us are aware of that. And if we're not, I think that bodes for another problem. But, you know, we are. And right now, I think that we're just so not clear as to how that we're just so not clear as to how soon this will be over. And so it necessitates, I think, continuing in this process. I love the idea, I would love the idea of being there in person on some days. I would. But there is that caution just right now for, you know, just not really knowing what we're dealing with, because I don't think any of us do. So I am in agreement that there should be some rule that allows us to, that requires us to come forward. I do. But I'm not so sure if now, in the middle of this pandemic, is the time for us to sort of set that. I think we can come back and take a look at this and decide how we want to do moving forward, once we're somewhat even more clear as to, you know, how this thing will go in the coming months, or even in the next year.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Walters and then Ms. McGraw.
I agree with Mr. Young. Sure, it's, it's great to be there in person. I don't know that we need a rule for it. I think that the voters are capable of determining if council members are participating or doing their due diligence or their homework, or effectively participating or arguing for their constituents' points of view. I do hope that the pandemic sets a new normal, however, as well. That if you have the flu, if you have the sniffles, don't come to the meeting, don't come to work, telecommute in, participate remotely. We don't need to breathe your germs. I think that really ought to be the new normal. And I don't feel the need to have a rule here to keep track of how many people in a given calendar year have run up against that rule. And I have no confidence that eight is the magic number. So I would be okay with adopting this resolution. The, the address thing, I think that occasionally people don't want to give their addresses. They want some privacy. I think it's useful to know if they're a constituent. But also occasionally, we have schoolchildren testify, and I especially don't think that they need to give their address. So I would, I would also get rid of that rule, comfortable doing that.
Yeah, thank you. I would agree with Mr. Walters. I think it's helpful for us, if it's a land use issue or something such as that, to have an address to kind of put it, whether or not they're in your area of representation or whatnot. But I also think privacy is a big issue. And, you know, it's one of those things, if people are comfortable to share that information, it's, I think, helpful for us to kind of have a sense of where folks are coming from when it comes to different issues around the city geographically. But if they're not comfortable, I don't think we should request it if it is, if it's not necessary. I got to say, if I'm voting for someone and they're representing me, I want to know I can show up and be in the same room with them and look them in the eye. I know we talked about it at length in September. I am fine working, I think we've done a really good job with our technology and being able to work remotely. I'm in complete agreement about the fact that if you've got the sniffles, or if you are ill, and the, or if you're gone and you're traveling, or you've got work to do remotely or out of the area, there should be accommodations made. I'm, though, really uncomfortable removing it completely from this document. I think there has to be the intent and the expectation that folks can walk in this room on Monday nights and expect to see their representatives there in this room. And body language is a big thing. Being able to have a conversation and follow-up after the meeting's over is a big thing. And, you know, that's part of our responsibility when we ask for a vote from our constituents. So personally, I'm completely uncomfortable removing it. Is eight the right number? I think it's a good start. I think it's something that, yes, the pandemic is still going on, but our kids are in school. People are going to restaurants. This is a situation where no one has to remove their mask. We're not eating together. So I think it's reasonable for us to be here. Now, if we hit June and it turns out that most of us have maxed out those eight times of working remotely, then yeah, I think we should, it's a very reasonable thing for us to come back and address that. Maybe it needs to be 12. Or if it's a situation where there's a person who has to travel for work, we've done that this last year, was it this year or the year before? Yeah. Where we made an accommodation and we voted on it. And it was, I think, we were, we were in full agreement that that is a very reasonable thing, a request, that if someone has work that takes them out of the area, or whatever other personal issue, that's fine. But to just remove it completely is just, I am not comfortable with that.
Mayor Geer?
I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I've, I've done it for years as far as working remotely. And, and actually, prior to the pandemic, one of the greatest things of my job was to be able to travel and go meet in person with people, because I did that, you know, four days a month kind of thing, or six days a month, and spent the rest of the time holed up in my basement office and talking to people over a video screen. So it's absolutely great to get the opportunity to meet in person, super beneficial and important. I understand the, also the importance of being here and available to our constituents on Monday night. You know, my, my phone number and email are published on the website, and I, if, if it's a, you know, 360293, I answer it. And try to be as available as possible regardless of, you know, the, the day of the week. So I'm comfortable with it just being eliminated because I don't know that we need to impose this restriction on ourselves. I'd also be open to, like, if we kept the limit, or, you know, the number of eight as is, with the option where if somebody's work was, you know, took them essentially out of, or some other, you know, like rational reason, took them out of town, where they had to participate remotely, say, for four months, as long as council is able to approve something like that, then I'm, I'd also be in support of that sort of thing, to give us the flexibility.
Okay. So we do have a document. I mean, we could tweak it. We could add 12 remote meetings. We could say we're going to reevaluate in six months. We can do a lot of things. We do have to update how we're, we're operating today, though. We keep, keep doing this to adjust to COVID.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Mr. McDougal?
If we, if we don't do either kind of this suggestion or some other suggestion, are we basically saying, you know, 2082 expires and we have eight weeks before everybody has to be here all the time?
I couldn't understand. I'm sorry.
If, if we do nothing at this point, we're basically, are we saying, you know, Resolution 2082 will expire, and then everybody has eight weeks in which to, like, we're, we're back full-time regardless, essentially?
Correct. Is that, that's correct.
So that's, that's the implication of nothing?
Right, Steve?
Yeah, it expires the end of the year. That's correct. So then the existing council procedures would go back into effect. Well, they'd go back into effect in January.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Ms. Hunt?
The other feature of the existing procedures is it's a limit on how many council members can attend the same meeting remotely, and that would also go back into effect, which may or may not be what you intend.
Okay.
Mayor Geer?
Ms. Moulton?
I'm comfortable with all the changes, except for E seems to be our sticking point of limiting remote participation to eight times per year. And I'm not really sure how to address that, if it should be 12, or if, but everything else I'm fine with. So I don't know if we can adopt it and then, I don't know. It seems like we're...
So if you had 12, and then if someone had a unique situation, they could come to council and ask for an exception, and perhaps that would work for everyone. That was just a suggestion.
It might, because that's three months.
Yeah, that's three months.
That's an entire quarter of the year. So to me, 12 seems reasonable.
And they can always come and ask for a special situation if need be.
Exactly.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller, then Mr. Young.
I was going to make a motion, but I'll let Mr. Young go.
Okay. All right, Mr. Young?
Well, again, I, I understand the rationale behind the numbers. I agree with you wholeheartedly about it. The thing that looms strongest for me, particularly given my spouse is in medicine, and much of our day-to-day life surrounds conversations of medicine. I struggle with setting, I could live with a little higher number, given that we're in the middle of a pandemic that really does, doesn't seem to be showing any metrics of abatement, even here in our county. And we're still making the determination as to how, how infectious the new variants are, and what impact they will be, and/or if any of the booster shots some of us have had will be effective. So that is my concern in putting a mandate and then asking for a special dispensation for not being able to make that. I, I think that it would be in the interest of council to use the opposite approach, meaning that we may increase the number to, you know, X12 or whatever the number is, and then come back and review it later. I just, I struggle with trying to set a number in the middle of a pandemic when we got variants mushrooming right now. Whether or not we feel safe individually or not, whether or not that's actually true or not, is, is a different thing. I just don't think this is an appropriate time to sort of set that into concrete. I just don't.
Thank you.
Mayor Geer?
Yeah. Here's the thing. I think we have shown in the last, from 2020 to 2021, we're a pretty nimble body. If there, if the county comes out and says things need to get shut down, we can very quickly make accommodations and suspend this requirement, and all of us will go back remotely. Absolutely. I guess, you know, once you remove any requirement, it's going to be a really, I will say nasty fight, I could see happening, to bring, to reinstate any kind of expectation of being in person. So my inclination is to do something that's reasonable. And then, yeah, if, if tomorrow we realize that the newest variant is a problem, we suspend it and we all go remote. And, and we can do that very quickly. So, so my, my feeling would be to do eight, 12, if that's where the group is at, and then we reevaluate after the first quarter of the year and say, how is this working for everyone? Where are we all at? Do we feel comfortable? If we don't, then, then, yeah, maybe we need to change it. But, but I, I don't want to do it lightly.
Mayor Geer?
Mayor, Mayor Geer?
Mr. Miller?
Well, I, I think I'm, I'm going to make a motion, because Anthony will have an opportunity to comment on the motion, and I think it'll answer his concerns. I move to adopt the resolution or procedures with the, with the following change. Restore line 4.3, line E, restore that, change the number to 12, and renumber that, or re-letter that as C, if that makes sense. So adopt the resolution as presented with the following change, restore line E, 4.3, line E, with the change from eight to 12, and renumber, re-letter that line E to C.
Mr. Walters?
Shouldn't someone second it?
I, I think I'll go ahead and second Mr. Miller's motion. And would suggest, then, that we amend that motion to also add to the text of the adopting resolution, a reference to that attachment, because there is no reference to the attached change in the text, and that this be brought back on consent next week, since there's a couple of changes here.
Okay. So Part F says that we need to also record who participates remotely. I assume that's going to need to, if there's a maximum, that will be included. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So we have Mr. Miller, and we have a motion by Mr. Walters, but he, he's asking to amend your motion, Mr. Miller. Is that?
Yep. No, I concur.
All right. So then, Ms. Hunt will take a vote, and then if you all agree, this will come back on the consent agenda next week.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Mr. Hoagland.
If I may. So if I understand correctly, then item E would be added back. Item E would become item C, and would be changed to 12 times per year. And then item F would be left as well. That would become item D. Then the recording secretary, most noted in meeting minutes, the participation of an absent council member.
Is that what you meant, Mr. Miller?
Yes, that, that makes sense. Thank you for that catch, Mr. Hoagland.
And is that what you second, Mr. Walters? Okay. All right. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Excuse me, Mayor Geer?
Yes, go ahead.
Did council want to specify an effective date for this resolution? There isn't one in the draft. Does this become effective on the 1st of January or today?
Mayor?
Head nods are inaudible. I need someone to say something, please.
Mr. Walters, go ahead.
In no case would it become effective today, because I think what my motion was, was to bring it back on consent after these changes have been drafted. But I would suggest an effective date of January 1. And for the record, I see several head nods.
And Mr. Miller agrees with that amendment to the motion. All right. So we all clear now? All right. Ms. Hunt, would you call for a vote?
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Young?
After the second, do we sometimes still have discussion?
Well, sometimes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Ms. Hunt?
Mr. Young? Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one to bring this back for action next week.
All right. Thank you very much. Great conversation. All right. At this time, we're going to move on to item 6D. This is open for public comment. This is ordinance 4003, adopting a fund balance policy for the city of Anacortes. This is a discussion with possible action. Mr. Hoagland?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. Once again, attempt to share my screen. Okay. So our current fund balance policy was adopted in 2016 by ordinance, and what that did was establish a emergency reserve fund, also known as a rainy day fund. It established that fund in, within the accounting fund of the general fund. And it was based on 20% of the expenditures of these seven funds that are identified here. So where, the way we approached, or the way we came to that was based on the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, best practices, which identifies the equivalent of two months of, and they give a variety of options, but it's basically two months of your budgeted revenues, your actual revenues, budgeted or actual expenditures. And two months equals 16.7%. So we just rounded up to 20%. And we based it on these, these seven funds, because at the time, they were identified as our most in, I guess, maybe most vulnerable funds that relied generally on taxes or, or reliance from the, the general So we are recommending a revision of the metric that establishes the emergency reserve amount. So currently, we use that 20% metric of the seven operating funds. And as part of our year-end procedures, we make that adjustment in the accounting system and set that balance for the following year. So we, we do the true-up of the, the current operating year, figure out what 20% of those seven operating funds expenditure funds expenditures are, and then we set that for the following year. So originally, the general fund, I guess, three, again, originally, the general fund rainy day fund, it was thought that that would represent the emergency reserve for all seven of those accounting funds. What we have found, though, as the several years of history that we have, is those individual accounting funds have been maintaining adequate cash reserves on their own. So what we currently have, so what our recommendation at this point is, and I'll get through this, and then I have a couple more comments, but, so currently, the reserve is set at 20% of those seven operating funds. The idea that I'm proposing now is tying it to the property tax levy, so we would have a new metric of identifying what that rainy day fund balance would be. And currently, our property tax levy is 5.3 million, our current rainy day balance is 5.6 million, so the amounts are relatively close, are in the same ballpark. If you look at our emergency reserve changes over the last several years, it's averaged about $362,000 and change each year, so it's increased about 7.7% each year. When you look at the property tax levy, it's increased about $116,000 or 2.3% each of those same years, so a much slower rate of change. These are the cash funds I was referring to a little bit ago. Each of these accounting funds has their own cash, and this is a current snapshot. This will certainly change by year-end, but if you look at what the current cash balance is in each of these operating funds versus their draft budget, you can see that each of these has a pretty healthy reserve. Parks is at $988,000, which is 44% of their draft budget. The cemetery is actually over 100% of their draft budget. The lowest one, being the EMS fund, has current cash of $979,000, which is just under 20% of their draft budget. So this comment here, I wanted to address, the road maintenance fund is included currently in our current policy as part of that metric, and I would recommend that we remove that because it doesn't, the road maintenance fund doesn't really operate like a typical accounting fund. It operates more like a capital projects fund. And what I mean by that is, the fund is very reliant on restricted cash or restricted resources, particularly from the transportation benefit district sales tax, and the scope of what is performed in that fund can be pretty easily reduced if those resources become more scarce. Unlike the parks department or the cemetery or the library, whose, the majority of those funds expenditures are made up of staff costs, and they have kind of this, you know, ongoing mission, and it takes basically the same amount of resources year to year, unless the headcount changes, obviously, and that's not the case with the road maintenance fund. So that's why I would recommend removing the road maintenance fund from that calculation. So our current policy, right now, 2021, the reserve fund is 5.6 million, and under our current policy, the 2022 draft from those seven operating funds would generate 31.4 million in expenditures, and this asterisk, I removed the capital funds out of the general fund, so there's a significant amount of capital funds in the general fund in the 2022 draft for one and a half million for the ladder truck in the fire department, and 9.2 million in the fiber department for the continued build-out. And I removed those because they, those capital projects don't really need a reserve. If we don't have enough resources, you can reduce the scope of your capital. Unlike your operating costs, you can't really reduce that scope unless you reduce staffing and, you know, other programming metrics. So that's why I removed those capital numbers from this calculation. So using that, sorry.
Mr. Hoagland, is that change by itself a change in the policy, though?
So it's a good question. The way our policy is drafted, it's not really defined. We reference 20% of expenditures, so I think there is room to make those determinations. So I think with the existing policy, we could actually make this change.
Seems like we would benefit from clarifying, though, that we should exclude the capital expenditures.
Yeah, it's a great, great point, absolutely. So using this metric of 31.4 million in the 2022 draft, that would generate a reserve of 6.2 million versus the 5.3 million of what the property tax levy is. So pretty significant difference, 900, you know, 900,000. And using this metric provides a 28.4% level against the 2022 general fund draft budget versus the 20% of all seven of those funds. Yeah, so this is just kind of summarizing that, the 5.3 million versus the 5.6 million that's currently in the 2021 accounting system is our rainy day balance. It would make cash flow planning easier. This change would reduce the, it would reduce the rate at which that rainy day fund is growing, and it would free up cash for operating needs. So this is the final slide that I had, and the comment I wanted to make before opening up to further discussion is, Mr. Walters emailed me about this after the council packet came out, and made some really good points about this, and what I wanted to talk about tonight further was some of the comments that he made. So one of his points, which is a very valid point, if you tie it to the property tax levy, it's effectively a decreasing metric, because it doesn't grow generally as fast as CPI, as the change in the economy grows. So if we were to, but we have other options. We could look at this 20% metric that we are currently using, we could change the makeup of what funds we use to develop that number, eliminating Fund 104, the road maintenance fund would be, I think, part of it. Washington Park is also included in that calculation. Washington Park generally supports itself through user fees, it's got healthy cash balances, it wouldn't be unreasonable to remove that from the calculation as well, which would reduce the amount of that balance. And then, you know, keeping in mind, the general fund is still there, it's still, the general fund is still always there to help those other funds if they get into a position where they need an influx of cash, just to get them through some kind of a, some kind of an issue. You know, we've done that a number of times. Just recently, at Washington Park, there was damage to the bull launch, to the dock out there, and we were able to do a general fund transfer to help with that. So that's always on the table as well. But...
So Steve, can I have a question?
Please.
So I've known, I know over the last eight years, we've grown our reserves greatly, and we're in a much improved financial situation. When you look at, are there metrics that you follow as far as municipalities, the amount of money that is kind of a standard for good municipal practice? Are we over that amount in reserves versus what we should be having for cash flow? Because I think that should be part of the discussion, too, just that our metrics are in line with just good accounting principles in managing our financial position and having a strong city and, you know, fiscal policy, and sets itself for the ability to have municipal bonds or whatever we need. So go ahead, if you can answer.
Yeah, it's a great question, and there's, I find it actually remarkable how little information there is out there on what good, sound fiscal practice is. So the GFOA best practice of two months of expenditures, that's, that's what we've been following, and that's about the only real hard guidance there is. We found, Philip Stephan, the finance manager, he found a reference, or an article that was talking about the same thing, having sound fund balance policies, and they talked about 5% to 15% of your expenditure or revenue budget as a reserve. So what we're doing, you know, exceeds that, and our 20% across those seven funds exceeds what GFOA is recommending. So, and one other point I wanted to make, we, you know, that reserve fund has been growing pretty rapidly, and, you know, it essentially represents a fund balance for seven different funds, which I don't really, I mean, money is great, right? Savings are great. Money is like health, the more, the better, but we do need to consider our need for working capital as well. Over the next couple of years, you know, we'll be finishing the fiber build-out that's operating out of the general fund, and so having capacity for efficient cash flow is necessary as well. So that's why I wanted to talk about this tonight.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
So what I had suggested was that, number one, we not use the property tax levy or reference to the amount of the property tax levy as our metric, because, as Mr. Hoagland said, property tax will decline as a percentage of our budget over time, as sales increases and property tax remains largely static. It makes sense right now, but over time, when everybody's forgotten about the whys of this policy, the policy will tend to make less sense as sales tax grows. So I wonder if Mr. Hoagland could bring us back an analysis of what if we excluded all those capital expenditures, excluded Washington Park, and instead base the calculation on operating expenses and the general fund and those other general revenue-based funds, starting at the GFOA number of 16.7%? But I think we want to go beyond that. I think we would like, like our existing policy gives us a 20% metric, it didn't just borrow the 16.7, it went with 20%. I don't know if double that is necessary, but maybe a couple of numbers, and some analysis as to where that leaves us. Because I understand that we do need to make this change near term so that we can support fiber and the rest of our expenses, and have sufficient cash flow going forward. So, and I wonder if Steve could talk a little bit about the urgency of this policy change?
Yeah, and I'd be happy to do that. It'd be easy to put together a few different scenarios so you can see what those changes look like. So ideally, I'd like to have something, I was thinking by the end of, by the end of the year, but it, the policy that we have now, the calculations, it's not possible to do those calculations until well into first quarter anyway, so it's generally not posted until after March because of all of the accruals and other activity that needs to take place beforehand. So giving it a little more thought, it's probably not really urgent to get it done before year-end, but there's probably a few tweaks that could be made that would make it easy to do so if you wanted to. So...
Mr. Miller?
So Steve, would one of the, would one of the possibilities be, you know, rounded up closer to our operating expenses and make it 17%?
Sure, absolutely.
Just as another option that you could throw at council?
Yeah.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yeah, Mr. Miller, that's kind of what I was thinking. I can't quite wrap my head around the rationale for tying it to the property tax increase. I mean, the numbers are close this year, but as we know, we're kind of, we're going in the wrong direction with that. So something that's tied to the Government Finance Officers Association Best Practices of those two months of budget. Now, if there are certain funds that can be removed, because that doesn't really, you, there's certain, such as the Washington Park Fund, that shouldn't be included, that's fine, and we can get it to a lower number, but I want it tied to something year to year that's, that resembles the budget and those two months of reserves for operating costs.
Very good. All right. Well, maybe that's something you can do pretty quickly, Steve, and get back.
Yeah, I can bring, yeah, absolutely. I can put together a few different scenarios and bring those back next week.
Okay. All right, is that agreeable to everyone?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Walters.
And importantly, I think we ought to see not just the minimum of the two months, but see whether we can handle three months or, you know, four months, whatever.
Okay.
After we back out those capital expenditures.
Thank you. All right, so no one from the audience has commented or raised their hands, so we'll move on then to Item 6E. This is open for public comment. This is ordinance 4002. This is establishing a new salary schedule for the mayor's position, and Ms. Schu is going to present this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of the audience. As Mayor Gear mentioned, tonight I'm presenting ordinance 4002, which would establish a new salary schedule for the mayor's position. The city of Anacortes is unique in that we are the only city in the state of Washington that has a tiered or step increase for our mayor's position. This structure was put in place in 2005, and currently, the 2022 eight-step salary range for the mayor is $101,752.60 to $122,660.67. So a new mayor in 2022 would come in at step one at the $101,752.60 a year. Mayor Gear and I have spoken about this. We also had this recommendation reviewed and supported by the personnel committee, that we want to ensure that the wage for the mayor's position is commensurate with the demands of the position, but that it also will attract people to run for office that are not dependent on other financial means to be able to run for that position. So what you'll find before you is an ordinance reflective of this recommendation that would remove the step schedule and move to a base wage in 2022 of $124,000. In future years, the social security CPI would be the inflator, as it is now, for that position, but that this would be a reset, basically, a movement away from a salary step system. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, I might enter in. This is a unique situation, this can only be done at a time when a mayor like myself is leaving office, and we have the opportunity now to adjust this, I think, commensurate with what it takes to do this job, the time commitment. This position also is not only the mayor in a ceremonial sense, this mayor is the day-to-day CEO of the city of Anacortes, and it's a very full-time position, so I really feel strongly that this wage increase is fair and... position. So I, I really feel strongly that this wage increase is fair and fits the, the level of complexity and responsibility. And when you compare it to other similar type jobs in our region and community, it's, the citizens are getting a really good value for this salary also. So those are my comments tonight.
Mayor Gare.
Mr. Walters.
I've been on the council for a couple of discussions about the mayor's salary, and I have long argued that we should not have a salary schedule for the mayor. We should not have a step increase. We should not give bonuses for longevity. For the only city in the state like that, it creates a substantial margin as you have a longer-term incumbent. Between the incumbent and what a challenger would make, creating a disincentive comparatively for someone to run for mayor. So in my view, whatever we do, we should get rid of the salary schedule and have a single number. For me, the only remaining question is what should that number be? I understand that we commissioned a study to compare other mayors' salaries, but I haven't seen that document. Is that something that could be circulated to us before, before we make this decision? I also understand that there's no special magic to when we make the decision. We can make it now, we can make it next week, we can make it in January. There's just a constraint on the mayor himself or herself actually voting on it.
Correct. Go ahead, Emily. Do you want to redress that?
Certainly. So, Mr. Walters, you, you are correct that the, the mayor's wage can be addressed at any time because it's not impacted by, the, the mayor does not vote for their own wage. And so the city council sets the, the wage for, for the mayor's position. Yes, we did do an outside review of, of mayor's positions, and we looked at similar-sized cities, both in the census population and, and population, census valuation and population. What we found is that many cities have city administrators. And so we looked at it in a couple of different ways. One, looking just at the, the mayor's wages, and then also looking at cities that have city administrators and what those ones are as well. This is a position where the, the mayor is in the office, working, working full-time as the, doing many of the, the roles that a, a full-time city administrator otherwise would, would be working on.
Mr. Young.
No, I, you know, I, I agree with the sentiment that, you know, it's time to take a look at the mayor's salary. I went back and I looked at the ordinance, and I found that council's salary, I know the issue we're discussing here is the mayor's salary, but I also thought that we were look, the study that was done, Ms. Schu, also looked at salaries of department heads as well, and it also took a look at council's salary, or stipend, if you would. And so I would be interested in seeing more of the data. I guess I'm just sort of a little surprised by just bringing forward the mayoral salary versus the department head salaries that we were also talking about. I think when I looked back in 2006, when Mayor Maxwell signed the original ordinance, I think council's stipend was 1.164% of the mayor's salary. And in 2013, I think council's stipend is 1.363% of the mayoral salary. And so when we are talking about looking at department heads' salary, I think that was the library, I think there are some others. I guess I was just hoping we can take a look deeper at the data and then move this forward together, because I know that we're needing to address some of the others as well.
Yes. So tonight, what is before you is the, the mayor's discussion. In the Personnel Committee, we did review the, the data as it relates to the council member positions and the, the mayor's position. My understanding from the, that meeting was that the item that was going to be brought forward was the, the mayor's position. The council member's position is, while it was addressed also through an increase where it went up, I believe it was $50 a year for, for many years to get to the current stipend, that, that it's currently a leading stipend in our current comparable cities that we're in.
Mayor Gare. Yes, Mr. McGrath.
I'm, I'm almost finished. Just, I wanted to follow up on that. I think, at least as far as I am aware, you know, I think that what you're referencing in the council's stipend, I think that was from 2013. I guess the thing that I was looking for is if Mr. Walters is correct, and I believe he is, is that, is this really something we need to do in the immediate sense? Or is this something we can do in January, once we look at the other data? Because I think in looking at the pieces that came together to sort of rule out Linwood, rule in Burlington or Bellingham, I, I guess I just really want to look a little deeper. I think the mayoral works incredibly hard. You're absolutely correct. And I do think a raise is necessarily needed. And I'm not advocating for absolutely for a council change. I'm just pointing out that I think we all do, as well as other departments. So I would really prefer to look at something just a little bit deeper, some of the data, and then maybe we can move it forward expeditiously. That's just my opinion.
Ms. McGrath.
Yeah, Mayor Gare. So on October 21st, I think was our last Personnel Committee, it sounds like. I might have missed one. But I believe, Mr. Young, you were there, Mr. McDougal and I were all at that. Ms. Schu and Mayor Gare, we talked about compensation, the compensation study. That was pretty extensive. We were given a lot of documentation about it. We looked at the mayor, the mayor's schedule, their, her wage schedule in comparison to other cities, whether it is kind of a part-time mayor position, whether it is a city manager, whether it's a combination of both. And we really discussed at length, how do we approach this, our specific community's mayor, because it is a full-time job? And because we were the only city in the state that had this, this step. And obviously, we don't want to be the only one doing that. So clearly, something's wrong. One of the other topics that we discussed at length was council's compensation. And Ms. Schu brought us a pretty extensive study of comparable cities. And it was very clear that we are currently compensated at the highest amount compared to anyone else or any other cities of our size with our kind of demographics. So while we talked about it some, we, I, as a Personnel Committee, we tabled that. We make enough, we don't, we didn't really feel like that was a, a priority to increase that compensation, because we are kind of leading the edge. Now, we've had that for, since 2013, but it appears that that still makes a lot of sense. And, and as a committee, we didn't really feel that that was something we wanted to bring to the public. But the mayor's wage makes a lot of sense to readdress. Those steps don't make any sense. Taking it to the proposed salary seemed like we were, it's not the highest, it's not the lowest, but it fit kind of where our, our managers are for various departments. It fit where our community is for some of those other leaders that are in charge of large organizations. It was kind of in the middle there. There was a, and if Mr. Walters wants to see that, it, it's quite extensive. Ms. Schu did a lot of work to collect that information and work with the consultants. When it comes to some of those department heads, and there are some truing that needs to happen. There was, you know, some got out of whack with, historically compared to where they should be. And I think as a Personnel Committee, we are committed to addressing those in the first quarter of 2022. But this is a unique situation with an outgoing mayor and an incoming mayor, that, that, that we have a nice, clean kind of break and not put the next person sitting in this chair in an awkward position. So I do think it's something that we want to accomplish before the end of the year. And I'm very comfortable with what has been proposed.
Mayor Gare, may I respond to that?
Yes, go ahead.
No, Ms. Cleland McGrath, I, I totally agree with you. I'm not in any disagreement whatsoever. I agree that the mayoral salary should be increased for the amount of work that they do. If you're speaking of the October meeting, I was there. And, and I think some of the, yeah, I guess I'm sort of struggling a little bit with the word extensive that you used a lot, in that we did delve into the details of the number, we delve into the statistical data area where different things were coming from, why one city did work and why another city did not work. I understand that. And there were still some additional questions about how and why it would be better to raise the salary so we could attract. But, you know, I don't think anyone moves here to the city to, for looking for the job of being a mayor. I think that's very different than a public works director's position. And secondarily to that, I just think that when we're talking about department heads, I just still say that there are some things that we really need to take a hard look at. And I'm not so sure that we had the discussion I would be looking forward to about it all uniformly.
Well, and so to respond to that, Mr. Young, I, I think we're going to continue to have discussions about the department head compensation in our Personnel Committees. That's why it's not in front of us this evening, is that, that, that needs to be refined and addressed in the upcoming first quarter of 2022.
But my question is, why take it out, this one thing out? And, and I think, Mayor Gare, you alluded to that just a little bit, but the point that I'm just simply making is that this is a bigger issue we were all looking at. And I think when we were talking about what works or what doesn't work for the city, when and how, I just think that there are other metrics that, you know, the Personnel Committee should be able to delve deeper into. At least, maybe I missed something out of that meeting, but I think that I was paying close attention.
All right. So I thought it was important to, I wanted to get this done as I was leaving, to get the mayor's position situated. I thought when we came out of that Personnel Committee, the overall consensus was the council's positions were, at this point, we were, you know, they were compensated more than other communities. Whether it's the correct amount or not, it was like, no one seemed to want to take that on. So that, and then the other piece, a director's piece, those are one-time wage adjustments that need to be made by comparing those positions with like cities in the region, and depending on the experience that each director has. I've been working closely with, with Emily, and I've met with a couple of, of Ms. Cleland McGrath, and reviewed some of the one-time wage adjustments for the directors. And I guess in my mind, that also came under the mayor's authority as my overall responsibility of running the city, just making sure that that was within the budget and it was gone through the process with the Personnel Committee. I wasn't intending on bringing those to City Council per se, but doing it through our structure that we've always done. So that's how I was addressing those. And of course, it's, you know, none of that's, nothing finalized has been, nothing final has been done there yet. But we do have some directors that we knew to, to make some adjustments for this year's budget moving forward. So my hope was that all those would start, all the new salaries would start, you know, January 1 of, of 2022, because we've worked really hard this fall to get that information. We've made sure that we've allowed for that in our budget process. Mr. Hoagland's been part of that discussion, that anything we do is, has already been accounted for in our budgeting. So I hope that helps in my response. Mayor Gare.
Ms. Moulton. Thank you. I think that, that your comments and Ms. Cleland McGrath were very helpful in providing context, because when I just saw what's in my packet, I see this increase. And even though the increase in the mayor's wage is $8,000 from now, it's $22,000 from what it would have been. So it's a big jump. And obviously, we're all very concerned about the budget and money. So this has helped a lot to, to provide that context. I think it would have been good to have in the packet perhaps, a spreadsheet or maybe some context about the look at the other mayors and the size of the city.
And we can provide that.
Yeah.
This could be a starting point tonight.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so.
It's never comfortable to talk about giving increases in money.
It's not fun talking about money really sometimes. But anyway, I just, thank you.
We can, we can bring that, yeah. We don't have to finish this tonight. But I just, I just wanted to make it, it clean and, and start 22 with this, all this work done, and that, you know, we're, you're set up for success for next year. So, yes, Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I think Ms. Moulton is precisely right. The proposal here doesn't come with any backup. So that's.
Okay, we'll provide that.
And so maybe next week's packet will include that. The, the next question, though, I think is, what, what, well, I guess we can have further discussion when we see that backup. But if you look at, say, Bellingham, I think, I think it's written into their charter that the mayor's salary cannot be made by the City Council, a separate branch of government, less than the public works director's salary. So, so in that way, they've ensured that the mayor is paid sufficiently to attract good applicants for the office. And so there are some values-based choices to be made. And City Council ought to be enabled to make those choices by having a complete packet. So now, how about the directors? Because I do think it is a problem to not have the director's salary and all the other staff salary within the purview of the City Council. Because the budget that we just talked about did not include any discussion about how we might be raising staff salaries. And I think we're proposing in the budget to give them a cost of living adjustment, commensurate with the CPI. And I think that's fair. But we didn't have that discussion. And that's not transparent to the public.
I know that we're still working on what the salary scheduling proposal will be for the non-represented positions. And that is being prepared still as part of the study, along with banning or salary structure for department heads. There's not been a salary schedule in place for department heads in the past.
Okay. So we've, we've heard what you'd like to see. And we'll regroup and we'll be back. Any other discussion on this? All right. So at this time, we're going to move to item 7A. We're going to be going into executive session regarding potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110, where this will be approximately a 40-minute discussion. There will be no action taken at the executive session. And after the executive session, this evening's meeting will be adjourned. Thank you all for attending this evening.